Jessica Mead.
Here.
Mike Boldick.
Here.
Noel Deef.
Here.
Mary Nuka.
Here.
Jenny Pyatt.
Here.
Jim Falzer.
Here.
JD Schrader. Jeanne Long.
Here.
And Andy Mary.
Yes. And we'll move on to the consent of draft. Looking at our motion.
I move the board approve the minutes of the May 28, 2019 Regular Board of Education meeting, June 6, 2019, special meeting. My actual report for May 28, 2019, consideration of current bills, checks number 10020 through 10098 in the amount of $257,098.23. ACH is number 181901354 through 181901477 in the amount of $1,329,330.16 in one-way or transfer in the amount of $25,241.32 for a total of $1,611,669.61.
Second. Okay, Mike and Danny, any questions, comments? We'll call on that too.
Mike Boldick.
Yes.
Noel Deef.
Yes.
Mary Nuka.
Yes.
Jenny Pyatt.
Yes.
Jim Falzer.
Yes.
Jeanne Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
And Andy Mary.
Yes. And I assume there's nobody signed in there.
Correct.
And, uh, I don't know if the representatives take it a summer off, I hope. Is he?
He's busy with some on that course.
Good. Good morning, Dr. Trump. And we'll go on to new business committee of the whole. And we'd be looking for Washington for those minutes. Anybody who'd like to make that.
I move the board approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on June 11, 2019.
Second. Any discussion? All those here?
Hi.
Um, and then we'll get right to AGR boards.
Well, Tom is passing out. What he's passing out is the last attached item in your board docs. Our school, um, yes, school board report. It also has our notes in there. As the presentation that you received didn't have all of the specifics, so we wanted to share that with you. What we'll be doing today is going through that presentation. And in the presentation, you'll note that we'll be discussing each of the students that were identified at each of the AGR schools. And Tom and I will just take turns going through each grade level. So rather than doing North report, West report, um, East and Crestwood, we'll be doing them all together. So the report does provide a summary of fall and spring performance data using the PAL. So we use the PAL benchmark for kindergarten, first grade for reading. And then from grades two through five, we use AIMS Web for reading. And for math, we did use the benchmark assessment of the AIMS Web for both kindergarten for all kindergarten through fourth grade. The AGR schools that are identified received universal instructional coaching support. And those schools are East, Crestwood, West, and North. The two remaining schools that are not AGR did not receive universal instructional coaching. And those are Spring Valley and Pleasant View. So data from all six of the elementary schools are included along with overall district performance average for reading and.
So I know in one of the, not even the fall meeting, there was questions about the assessment screeners that we're using. So PAL stands for勒明克 awareness literacy screener. And there's, um, basic reading fundamentals that are screened and assessed for early readers. Namely, our kindergartners, first graders. And, um, so the data you're going to see are what's called the sum score of those skills and then the concept of word, so.
For kindergarten. And then Megan's also going to assist us with a little bit of district and statewide comparison data as well as possibly some discussion on tracks.
Sure. So I'm at on the kindergarten page, it says data, kindergarten data reading. So it's, uh, those two graphs show the sum score of those early literacy skills that are assessed. And then the others, uh, the graph is concept of word. So for the sum score, three of the four AGR schools showed student growth from fall to spring. Crestwood identified three students in the fall that were less than 34 on the fall sum score. And of those three, all three met or exceeded the sum score benchmark in the spring. East identified six students in the fall. Three of those students met the spring target. West identified six. Two of those students met or exceeded the spring target. North identified nine. And three of the nine students targeted and met or exceeded the spring benchmark. So the remaining two schools that did not receive the universal instructional coaching, both schools showed growth, um, from fall to spring. And, uh, just to clarify again, these are just snapshots of students' performance with anticipated benchmarks throughout the school year. Uh, the benchmarks are adjusted from beginning to the end of the year. And, uh, one thing that we've also talked about when we present this data does not necessarily show actual growth. Student may not have met the benchmark, they, they showed growth. The other thing it doesn't show is students that already were above the benchmark and how many of those students actually went, um, well above. So we're focusing on those targeted students. And, um, concept of word, three of the four AGR schools showed student growth from fall to spring. In the fall, Crestwood identified three students. And, um, those, all three of those students met the spring benchmark. Um, with PAL spring assessment. East identified six. Four of the six met the spring benchmark. West identified four. One of those students met the spring benchmark. North identified four with one of those students meeting the spring benchmark. And the two, two's, uh, schools not receiving the universal instructional coaching both show student growth from fall to spring.
The other thing that I want to point out too is that the graphs show all of the student population um, in kindergarten. And our AGR, the data that we're giving you are just the targeted. So I know that Tom had mentioned that the targeted students, like there were three at North and one, um, met the benchmark, those are just based on those targeted.
All right. So, uh, math. This assessment is student math performance in kindergarten, we use AIMS Web. And of the two AGR, two of the AGR schools showed growth in the fall, uh, from fall to spring. And two of the AGR schools showed a decrease in progress towards the spring benchmark. The targeted students at Crestwood were two students and none of them met the spring benchmark. Nine students were identified at East in the fall and none of those students, uh, targeted students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. West identified eight. And three of those eight met the spring benchmark. North identified seven. And three of the seven met the spring benchmark. And the two other schools not involved in the AGR, it's universal instructional coaching, both showed growth from fall to spring.
I'm just going to go backwards for one quick second. Um, the other thing that I'd like you to look at too is the district average. So if you back up one more page to the kindergarten reading, um, as a district, although some schools did, um, not meet the benchmarks or did, um, not show growth from fall to spring, based on the number of students that met benchmark, uh, we did still show improvement as a district on both the concept of word and the sum score for PAL.
The other thing.
So there was an improvement, um, district-wide, um, on the math. And the one of the two schools, the AGR schools that didn't show growth, it's only a 1%, so it's 84 to 83% at Crestwood for math. And I don't, I think that could be based on the number of students, um, in the class as well. Because if a student moves, then now our percentage, um, you know, that we're looking at now is.
Yeah, I think it's also important to point out, before again, Crestwood, eight, over 8% of the overall class, um, met the benchmark. So we're also not, even though they missed it by one percentage point, um, but that's the East's, over 8%.
Andy, do you have a question?
Well, my question was, you know, at East, we both met and needed. The spring is lower than the fall. While all the other schools are pretty close, sort of. So is there an explanation for that?
I'd rather not talk about specific classroom performances in this meeting.
Okay. Going to save that for.
Yes.
Here truly, and all, and pretty much identifying really starkness. Okay.
One thing that might give you a little bit more detail on that is if you look into our, our specific AGR report, um, like on mine, I have two different classes for like, say kindergarten. So one class is in blue and one's in red. And then there were students that transferred, like my group class, I had three students that transferred. Um, so that right there can skew the, the percentage in itself. Um, because now our population is less, so now if, if more students, um, were identified that still stayed, now our percentage could be, you know, if they didn't meet the benchmark. And three that left already had the benchmark, now we're looking at not comparable.
Do, I remember in the, in the PowerPoint, in the winter, the East reading scores pretty only more than perfect in there, but we go to.
Yeah, in the winter, um, we showed you data that was making progress. So we didn't show you a benchmark because there wasn't an already there benchmark. So we just showed you students that were making progress towards the benchmark, but, but you're right. All right, so I'll go on to the first grade data. Um, so the first graph is showing you the students that are at or above average as measured by the PAL assessment for reading. And then the second one is students that are at or above average, um, as measured by the AIMS Web for math. So for reading, um, two of the four AGR schools showed student growth from fall to spring. One school stayed the same and one school showed a decline in performance for students that met the benchmark for reading. Crestwood, five students were targeted, which was that they scored less than 44 on the fall sum score. Zero met or exceeded the sum score of 35 or higher, um, as measured by the PAL assessment. And you note, the fall expectation was 44 and then it was 35, so they check. I mean, the number looks like it's expecting less of you, but it's really calculated differently. So it's not that it was expected of less. East, five students were targeted. Three of those students that were targeted met or exceeded the spring benchmark. At West, five students were targeted and one of those targeted students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. And at North, 11 students were targeted and zero of those students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. Of the two remaining schools that did not receive universal instructional coaching, one school showed growth, um, and one school showed a decrease, um, from fall to spring reading. For math, all four AGR schools showed student growth. Crestwood, five students were identified in the fall for below, below or well below the benchmark. And one of those scored at or above, um, in the spring, for the spring benchmark assessment.
This is the coaching that we talked about at the last meeting?
Yes.
That we got the presentation?
Yes. The universal coaching, um, that were contracted with Connie. Um, East, six students were targeted. Two of those targeted students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. West, there were 10 students that were targeted. Six of those targeted students met or exceeded spring benchmark. And at North, six students were targeted and one of those targeted students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. Of the two remaining schools that did not receive that instructional coaching, both schools showed a decline in performance from fall to spring in math. For first grade. And if you look at the district average for reading, for, um, first grade, you'll notice a 1%. And again, with it only being 1%, that isn't, you know, a significant amount to show a significant decline. Um, and then for math, there was an increase actually as a district.
What happened at Pleasant View?
We don't have Pleasant View's principal here too, explain that.
All right, second grade. On second grade, we are, we, we are presenting the reading and math, both using AIMS Web data. So of the, the four AGR schools, three, three of the four AGR schools showed student growth. One showed a decrease in student progress from fall to spring. Six students were identified in the fall at Crestwood. Um, and as well, are well below the instructional reading level. Zero met or exceeded the spring instructional level benchmark. Eight students were identified at East in the fall. Three of those eight met the spring benchmark. At West, 18 students were identified in the fall or targeted. Two of those students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. At North, 10 students were targeted in the fall. Seven of those 10 met or exceeded the spring benchmark. And of the two remaining schools not receiving the instructional coaching, one showed growth and one showed a decrease from fall to spring in reading. In math, two of the four AGR schools showed growth with one staying the same and one showing a decrease from fall to spring. Crestwood identified nine students in the fall. And for math, uh, below, or well below the math instructional level, three of the students met or exceeded the spring math instructional level. Nine students were targeted at East Elementary. Zero of those students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. Twenty students were targeted, have lost, zero met or exceeded the spring benchmark. 11 students were targeted at North in the fall. Seven of those targeted students met or exceeded the benchmark in the spring. And, um, two remaining schools not receiving the coaching, one showed improvement in fall to spring and one school showed, uh, showing a decline. And in, uh, both second grade overall, district average increased from fall to spring in reading and in math.
What do you think about North? Did they, how come they were so much more successful?
Um, I don't know that I have exact reasons as to why they are. Uh, we did have one new student add into the second grade, um, and they were already at or above. So that does add to the percentage of the whole.
But it's still.
So we did have 70%.
That's much better than two out of 18.
Correct. Um, and we started with, let's see here. We, I mean, we started with only 47% of our population already at or above. So with, I mean, our, our data also showed that we had less at or above to begin with. So they were already below or well below.
So that's not like we taught a lot more phonics at North the year before that or that year or something?
No, I wouldn't say, I would say that at North, they were using the same instructional, um, strategies and supports that across the districts they were.
Could it just potentially be that some kids just finally got it?
Could be. Um, I mean, there's, there are other factors that can weigh into the data, both ways for the positive as well as for the negative. Um, it all depends on how close they were to the, to meeting benchmark too. So without pulling all of the data individually, it's really hard to tell as a, as a whole, why that's true. And you'll notice in the third grade, when we get there too, my third grade data at North did skyrocket too.
So it's something to go look at though, like saying, what can spread around it?
Yeah. And it wasn't just one class, but at North only had one class, um, so to tell what can be differently, who we are.
Mm, it's Tyler.
Yep.
Will we be able to pull actual like implementation data? That's why it's so important that, when we look at those, that last report that we gave, the implementing practices, you can look at the differences in every classroom as to what instructional practices were implemented, to what level of implementation. And that will help show the specific reason why you might see higher student outcome growth per teacher.
Do you show the teachers this, like this chart right here comparing the classrooms and the?
I did, yep. I showed them in the winter as well, like we looked at our, the winter data. Everything that I presented here, I, I did show the North teachers.
Um, I think we're also getting coaching around reading.
Yep.
And this is just the, you're just relating the AGR coaching, right?
Yeah.
Right, but all the schools are getting.
So all, all the teachers received.
We're getting coaching on reading. Great.
Right.
Yeah.
All students or all, um, schools got the universal literacy. And then we also have out of AGR funds and different title funds. We have English language learners, because that was a specific achievement gap that we're targeting as well. Um, and then we also have, trying to think, our classroom environments. So that was a goal that we used for this too, knowing that, like, when we change the classroom environments, like making them literacy and print rich and changing all that impacts student growth as well. There's multifacets to how we, how we're using that. Um, but there's instructional coaching around different populations.
One thing that I also, um, think about too is that at the beginning of the school year, second grade was targeted at North of needing more support. So they did receive more support through title services, both push in as well as, um, pulled out small group because they already scored low. They, we knew that they were low as first graders and they were low coming in as second graders. So we subconsciously did provide more support to second, to a large portion of those second grade students.
Do we have the math one for that second grade or am I just blind?
Um, yeah, it's the next chart. So kindergarten is the only one that's on two separate, so math is right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, we can move on to third grade. Um, so third grade data, um, again, using AIMS Web for reading. Three of the four AGR schools showed student growth from fall to spring and one remained the same. Crestwood had eight students that were identified as below or well below, um, on the AIMS Web. And four met or exceeded spring benchmark. East had 10 students in the fall that were targeted. And of those, one of those students met or exceeded the spring benchmark. West had 27 students that were targeted. Five of those targeted students met or exceeded spring benchmark. And North had 23 students that were targeted. And 14 of those targeted students met or exceeded spring benchmark. Of remaining two schools that did not receive universal instructional coaching, one showed growth from fall to spring and the other showed a decline. So this is what I'm talking about for the leading one. If you look at North, we only had in the fall 15% of the fifth, of the third graders that were already meeting or exceeding. So there was a huge, significant, um, increase there for reading. For math, um, two of the four AGR schools showed student growth from fall to spring. One stayed the same and one showed a decrease in students progressing towards the spring benchmark. Crestwood had seven students identified as below or well below on the AIMS Web. Um, and one met or exceeded the spring benchmark. East had eight students that were targeted. Zero of those student, those targeted students met or exceeded spring benchmark. West had 26 students targeted. Four of those targeted students met or exceeded. And North had 19 students and five of those targeted students met or exceeded spring benchmark. Of the two remaining schools that did not receive the universal instructional coaching, one showed student growth for math and, um, one showed a decrease. District average, so you'll notice two for third grade. Um, there was an increase, um, from fall to spring, um, at a district level for third grade for both reading and. Now, our fourth and fifth grade data, we don't have AGR schools, although they might be listed as AGR if a school is. But the fourth and fifth grade teachers did not receive any additional universal instructional coaching. So we have just combined those all together as they didn't receive anything different because the grant only goes through third and third grade.
So it's not that we purposely didn't get that one. The grant is not usable for those grade levels.
Correct.
So, um, looking at our fourth grade students in reading, five of the six schools showed student growth from fall to spring. One showed a decline. For math, in fourth grade, four to six showed growth from fall to spring. Two showed a decline in progress towards that spring benchmark. The district average of the six elementary schools' performance did go up from fall to spring. And fifth grade.
Um, so four of the six schools showed student growth from fall to spring. Two showed a decrease, um, for reading. And for math, two schools showed student growth from fall to spring and four showed a decrease. Um, looking at the district average for reading, um, there was a decline. And it could be based on the fact that there were two schools that showed a significant, um, decrease. So that affected the trend for the district. And for math, there was a slight increase, um, for math, for the district.
Okay, so I need to talk about in comparison to the state. Um, so while in the U S, we look at reducing our gaps and achievement. Um, we know that that's a statewide issue in the state of Wisconsin. It's a national wide issue, but it's very big in the state of Wisconsin. So looking at how are we doing in comparison to the rest of the state? We don't have AIMS Web data in the rest of the state, um, so we look at forward, that's what you can see here, um, for third grade. So some basics of data. Um, when we pull this off of Y dash, we look at fact size. So fact size is the difference between the groups. Is it a big difference between the groups or a little difference? In this situation, we would want to see a small difference between the groups.
A difference between the achievement level or the poverty level?
Uh, the achievement level. So zero to .2 is considered a small difference. And if we had that, we wouldn't be looking at this. Um, .2 to .5 for the state is considered a medium level of a difference. And more than .5 is considered a large difference. So when you look at third grade ELA scores, the state is at a very large gap between economically disadvantaged students and not economically disadvantaged students. That .8 level is actually quite high. When we look at ANO's last year, that's when the data is available at Y dash for, when we get more updated data, put that in there. We're at .24, which is considered a median level, but we're .04, being in that small. Yeah. Looking at math, we're also reading about the same. State is higher at .88. And it's pretty consistent at that, in trends. And you can see that we're making some sharp declines, reducing our gaps. So actually at that .34, which is still considered within that median range, but we're, we're heading down.
Is that because we have less of a gap or because our high kids are not as high as the state average?
Well, same question. Um, so however, so yes, that would be less of a gap, whether they're high up or getting higher or they're not as high and we're catching up.
Right, but we don't know necessarily, like you can't compare our average to the, our average proficient or whatever it is to their state level average position based on, like, kids who are not economically disadvantaged?
Oh, yeah, we have an.
I mean, that would be.
We have it in the.
Yeah, that would share out.
That would share it out before, so.
Of course, we, we can find them. Actually.
Is that what we're looking at?
We can move on, but I'll let you know that later.
Yeah.
Because I actually.
So in comparison to the state overall, looking at third grade, and I only pulled the third grade for this, um, because again, AGR funding only goes up through that third grade level, um, it looks like we're making some great, um, reductions in our gap.
So all those gaps, is a small gap, still some statistical significance?
Yes, in, uh, when you look at effect size. So you, in gap reduction, we're shooting for zero, um, at all levels, but I don't know of a single district that would add a zero.
It's really bad when they flip off.
Yeah, so you can, you can give a negative.
First, students with special education, some of you have seen where they actually achieving it. I mean, what you look at.
Yeah.
Just the differences from 16, 17 to 17, 18, it's pretty significant.
Sharp.
Yeah, that's.
We really want that spread out. Nobody just don't have access to it yet. And they'll have a three-year trend that's much more. And the good thing that it shows is the initiatives that you are supporting as a school board and the direction that you're going is obviously showing trends. We, as a district, are looking at universal instruction and supporting our staff to grow their capacity and providing a high-quality instruction for all kids. Um, and data has shown that it's, it's working, so it's very exciting.
I mean, they, they also, when I'm looking at those tracks, looking at the district averages, because there are few that the district did act at least the same for increase on the percentage rise. And that's very hard to make, I mean.
And I think we probably want to just look at the district anyways with the consolidation next year. That's going to change it back.
Change it.
I was waiting a long time to see this grow. And I want to thank everybody for their hard work. I was very happy to see it.
I think you need to afford, I mean, it's harder to be able to support all of the given changes that we've made in terms of that reporting to the place, so it's, don't you all.
There's still a lot of work to do, you know, when you look at some of those. You know, it's, some of those targeted groups, one, two, three students made progress. And I think with, you know, our conversation with Nicole um, recently about supporting the teachers in doing the in-class interventions and then scheduling out um, how they're going to do those interventions, how they're going to strategically assess progress. And I, that was a great conversation with the principals and how we're going to roll that out. And I think, you know, this, what my experience this year has been where we're supporting the teachers in that universal instruction. Now we're kind of moving into that tiered, those levels of intervention. And as we progress into that, and you have a classroom teacher providing the intervention, the title teacher providing interventions, I think we're going to see better performance on those targeted students. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom and Don. Uh, we'll move on to uh, preliminary approval of the two thousand nineteen.
And in the effort to be efficient with your time I put together, I'm all, you know, the budget at this point is very, very preliminary. And now I'm just asking for action to approve the budget as presented um, so that we can start working on the annual report and getting ready for the hearing. And information will change over the course of the summer. So if there's questions, I can certainly entertain them, but that was the purpose of the memo.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary question as presented.
Exactly. Okay, any further discussion or comments? And then we'll do a roll call on this.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Mary Newfield?
Yes.
Jenny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Bowser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes. And we'll go on to the Neola Policy Update twenty-eight dash one and school safety.
I move the board approve the second reading of the Neola Policy Update twenty-eight dash one, School Safety Update and Revision Policies eighty-five hundred, Food Service and eighty-five ten Wellness.
Second.
May can genie, um, any discussion, comments on any of these? And I think we'll do a roll call on that too.
Mary Newfield?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Bowser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes. We'll go on to academic standards.
I move the board approve the notice of academic standards as presented for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Second. May can genie, is there a, this is all there, anybody, oh, Jessica. Uh, Bobby knew that.
I guess.
Check it and see if she's really awake, but she is. So um, anyway, that's all there. So we have a chance to read it over. Does anybody have any questions or comments? How does the minute allocation work? Like when we talked about a half hour for science, what is it, two times a week or one time a week? Is that like state statute or do we get to pick it versus reading time versus math time?
No.
There's certain, there's certain guidance for certain classes that you have to have included a certain amount of minutes. But in science and social studies like at elementary, there's not. Um, there's standards that are aligned with their curriculums.
I mean, but so there's not, the state doesn't say you have to teach it a certain number of minutes? But there is for reading.
For Pyatt there is or for different specials like music, things like that, there's different guidelines, but um, they're not specific for science and social studies. There are specific standards though, that those can be embedded within your math and your reading and your, or isolated at different times.
And did I see that um, it just changed dance and world languages? Yeah.
What did you say, what did?
They updated their standards for dance and world language.
Which actually I was kind of surprised on world languages that it wasn't already like that, but I think that's good.
Okay, any other comments, questions? What do we do for music in the middle school? You have to take band or general music or?
It varies by grade level.
So it sounds, it sounds in eighth grade?
So we kind of toyed with a lot of different options the past few years. So what it will be next year is fourth grade will be general music. Fifth grade will choose between band or choir, sixth grade band or choir. Seventh grade, they're choosing between band, choir or another performance-based music class, which we're calling Music Express. And then in eighth grade, they can choose band, choir or various other electives, so kind of.
Okay, so you could potentially get out of choir in eighth grade if you wanted.
You could. Or you could potentially access more music classes if that's your desire, yeah.
Yeah, I like that, but I didn't, the boys didn't care for the two music classes because they're like, we're in B, we already, why do we have to teach general music?
Right, that's, it seems even.
A little redundant, but.
So even, so, so now in seventh grade or whatever, if you're in band, you don't have to teach general music.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? And uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Imposed. And on to WIA membership.
I move the board approves the WIA membership renewal for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year, second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? We'll go over this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Imposed. And passes, and we'll go on to health in motion. Looking for it, I'm.
I move the board approve.
Oh wait.
I move the board approve the Health in Motion contract for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Second.
Okay.
The one that's uploaded um, is not exactly accurate. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that the date is not the same. I think there was seventy-six in there.
Okay.
It's eighty.
No, it says eighty. It says eighty.
Okay, the one that we pulled up today was, there were two highlighted portions and there were dates that were wrong. So I just wanted to make sure on part four, section four duties of the parties. And then under B, it should be the tenth and the tenth, not the fifth, the tenth.
Well, what's this, it, B, it says fifth, and fifth.
Yeah, it should be the tenth.
And then C, it says tenth and tenth.
Yep, and everything should be the tenth.
Oh, okay.
And that's what we agree about. It went back and forth. Trying to reduce our cost and um, still have a contract, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
For that.
I'm glad I had eighty in there, I wasn't sure about that, so.
Any other uh, questions, comments?
Just one, Andy, um, because it says in subsection three, services to provide a, the term. I assume that this is just because this contract started in two thousand seventeen and is building up in there. It's just manual renewal?
Yeah. We are going to do it. We are going to um, open it at the end of each time because I did, as I said, we did, um, I reached out to Aspiris and they just are not prepared next year. But they could be in the future, so Eric just said, you know, keep us in line, so it will be inherently, we'll do.
The question is, does that have to say starting first day of September two thousand seventeen or are you going to change that to starting September two thousand nineteen?
Well, I read, when I read that originally, I was wondering if it should be, but then it technically is, the difficulty is we do do some summer stuff and so it was like a rolling, like this is when it actually start, started was this, was two thousand seventeen? So I'm okay, you know, I'm new to the contract world, so whatever we think would be appropriate, um, I think it was just because that's when it started originally with Health in Motion was two thousand seventeen.
Right, but what, what is the term of it? When does this one act?
It's any thirty-day written notice. It does not say that I can't do RFPs, like it's a, it's a, I would just.
So, so if we didn't do anything right now, the previous contract would continue?
Yeah, I suppose. And it's the same con, it's the same contract. That's why we're updating it because they, the issue was, is that we were um, bill, they were billing us too many hours and so we, I needed to clean that up and I needed to give them an amount of hours that, and if they're going to go over it, that we need to have agreement um, based on the number of students that we are serving. So I did like an audit of it and so we've been going back and forth. Um, and if it, if it should say something different, like tell me what you're, you're wanting, um.
It's almost like we're doing this re- retroactivity, that's what I'm trying to get at.
It should say twenty nineteen. It should say twenty nineteen, right?
Because, because we are hoping for the next.
It doesn't really matter, you know, we don't have the.
So basically, technically, if you look at it, you're, you're talking about the previous contract then that will be valid until September first of two thousand nineteen anyway, because you're not giving them a notice, neither have they given you a notice to quit.
Okay.
So basically, this new agreement will start because you are negotiating some new terms. So I don't want them to come back to you and say, by the way, school district, you need to pay us for starting back to September two thousand seventeen.
Well, and I'm assuming that, and I, I get what you're saying, so even this, I, we're under the same contract. So if I have to, this summer, if I have summer evals and I contact them, it would technically be in the old contract that said these six. So I will make sure that he understands that and I'll put it in two thousand nineteen.
Right, I'd go with that if that's okay with the.
Okay.
And then should we have an end date of this contract, like we're trying to, to say?
What, yeah, through, through next year with the option to renew or exit with a thirty-day notice or ninety-day notice.
But it says that already.
It says. It keeps it going. It's going to be ongoing unless he.
But do you want to? Right, but you don't have, oh, you mean saying so you don't have to give them, if they just cancel whenever they want, so it doesn't.
But your contract, you're negotiating for a year-long contract.
Term.
You're, you're, you're talking about a term, but what is the term?
Wait, there is.
You're leaving it open-ended?
It is open-ended.
Yeah.
But you can submit RFPs.
I can, it doesn't say I can't.
Get all that data.
I just would have to give thirty-day notice if we were going to not go with them if I decided I was going to go with Aspiris next year. So it doesn't prohibit me from doing that, but then it also keeps continuity that we don't have to necessarily redo this if we're going to go with them. Unless you want it to, I mean, I, I mean, you, you tell me what you want.
But I think there's some advantage to have, I mean, with their students, understanding, yeah, with Brenda
Community.
and their familiarity with what she offers.
Well, and that's anon, I mean, we're going with them because they're the only ones there. We just so happen that Brenda is really awesome and, but Brenda's going to retire soon and so.
I was going to say, that's the beauty of having the thirty-day option is.
Yeah.
She can bail out. The term is essentially indefinite.
Yeah, it is.
Indefinite, but. Yeah, and they want. You can bail out whenever you want, it's our contract.
Thirty days.
It's the infamous escape clause. Yeah, it seems like. So do we just want to approve it subject to changing that to September two thousand nineteen? Yes.
Okay.
That's all, okay. Jim, will you modify your motion?
Yeah, so I move the board approve the Health in Motion contract um, with the amendment that it be uh,
Oh.
made for two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, September.
September twenty nineteen.
September, yeah, September one, twenty nineteen.
September first, twenty nineteen.
Who, who was second on that motion?
Maybe.
Nobody, I did.
Oh.
Wrong.
Genius, are you okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay. Anything else? And then uh, we'll do a roll call.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Bowser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yeah.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Mary Newfield?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes. We'll go on to North Lakes Community Clinic Dental Agreement.
I move the board approve the agreement regarding the dental care for students for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year. I'll second.
This is just a duplicate of what we provided this year with the same um, company. Darlene has taken a look and endorses it. We weren't sure if we've ever brought it to you before for approval, but um, they do provide these dental services. It's been several years now, so.
So they come to the school district?
They do.
Mm-hmm. At specified time.
Yes.
And I saw that they, they bill your insurance, so how does that work with the parents' insurance? Do they send it out to the parents ahead of time to get the insurance information?
How it used to work was, you know, they would come and they'd do a presentation in the classroom. And I think it was different between the rural schools and the city schools as far as the fluoride treatments and that kind of stuff, except that the people who had the dental ins, already had dental insurance just continued to do their own thing. This was just an option for the people that didn't have any kind of dental insurance. And you know, it gives the kids, you know, a lot of people that don't have dental insurance, they don't do the dentist with their kids. And then, you know, it's really important for them to learn the basics of taking care of their teeth.
Yep, didn't it also say that they're sealing?
Yes, they were sealants, they get an option for sealants, yeah.
So, so who pays for this?
I don't know, I didn't, they're, they didn't give me.
I'm, I'm sort of confused with that because from what you're seeing, Mary, is that if someone does not have dental insurance, it's a good resource for those children. But what I see in there talks more about will, will insurance and there is no balance billing or anything because they say that if whatever's not collected, they will not bill the parents or any, parents or guardians or the school. So is this a free service?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says responsibility, school should make appropriate space.
Sorry to interrupt, but my daughters, my daughters um, do receive this service within the school and they do have dental insurance as well, but what they get is like a little overview of their cleaning and if there's anything, plus they get their sealants um, through the school, like through this program, even though they have insurance. So like you just, it's like a sign up, so the schools, the students up here sign up for this series.
Ashley from North Lakes Community said that um, our comprehensive preventative program includes three visits to provide fluoride varnish and dental education throughout the year. At one of the three visits, children will receive dental sealants. Proud to offer these services to your students regardless of insurance status. And this here, we provided this year, these services to five hundred eighteen of our kids.
That's, that's a lot of philanthropy there. That's why I'm just sort of confused. I read through it three, four times and it said about the insurance and then I'm going, how do you, they didn't talk about the rest of them and there's no mention about the school bearing anything other than providing free space.
Right, we don't pay.
Yeah, we also don't know if they get a grant for this kind of stuff or.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't understand.
No, that's, that's, that's a very noble thing for them to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
It would be my guess that there's a government grant out there that's paying for the service and these folks are just ones that are providing it to schools.
How is it take to see a one kid's key?
Not one. Not one. And she's been very complimentary on our administrative staff too because we want to minimize the disruption to the instructional environment. So I'm not sure how it works. the disruption to the instructional environment, so I'm not sure how it works, but she's also always very complimentary that we work with her to provide dates and times and make it happen.
And like the location, like at North, we had room ninety-nine, which will now be our title room, but it was just a small room that could be used for a small room pull out, and she was able to conform that room, you know, put the bed in there, and they could get the students in and out, very efficient. And they bring down all those students at a time, so there's usually like three to four students at a time, and the ones there, and then they're prepping the next ones with, you know, the information and.
Okay.
Cool.
So there's really no money involved for the district here?
No.
Okay, there's no further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I've gone to overnight trip.
I move the board approve the 2019 Antigo FFAA Officer Training Overnight Trip, July sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, 2019, to the Nabokan School Forest.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Could I ask for a point of clarification? When we schedule overnights at Nabokan, are we taking those in the future to the board for approval? You know, because we, we went through a summer fitness where we did both Cap Susan and, um, the, the PE Outdoor Adventure. We have fourth graders that go to Nabokan, and we're, we're doing overnights there on a fairly regular basis, and we haven't taken these to the board, you know, our intent was mainly.
That's a good point, because it's school property.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And you certainly have parent permissions.
My thought is because it's school property, you know, and it's all part, in the school, so to speak, you don't need to.
Agree.
Okay.
I mean, technically, you're not going out of town, you're just going through.
Wow, yeah, it's really just like. If there's any.
You can bring that up, Bobby, and that's fine.
Um, policy twenty-three forty talks about overnight trips and does say that the board shall, um, for purposes of this policy, a field trip shall be defined as any planned journey by one or more students away from district premises, which is under the supervision of professional staff member, so the board shall approve those field trips and other district sponsored trips. But it sounds to me like.
It's under district premises, we're good.
Does it matter that it says they're using Jack Lake amenities?
That could be like a, a field trip for the day that they're there.
I don't know, is it, or are they camping there?
Yeah, where are they camping at? At Pat and Nabokan or Jack Lake? Using the school's spore shelter facilities along with Jack Lake's amenities.
So amenities might just mean they go down there to take a shower.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
Students will be staying in tents. They should be if they're on a trip.
And they're going swimming, volleyball, disco.
So there's a clarification, Kim, then. Camping's happening in Nabokan, we're good, otherwise if it's happening in Jack Lake in the future, they should be brought.
Okay.
Okay.
How big is on the design? Is that all done and ready? When we're gonna build that thing?
Yeah, yeah, that's not.
That's.
I didn't relate it to the. But I think that's, that's a topic for another time.
It, it is a topic, though, it should, it should be a topic for, um, next meeting. Okay. So, can we, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? Okay, go on to new hires.
I move that the board approve the new hires of Ron Abel, alternative ed teacher, Austin Capo, high school band teacher, Drew Pearson, tech ed teacher, Emily Shervensky, elementary teacher, Courtney Jerry, elementary teacher, Nick Schramm, elementary physical education, Barb Brown, English Language Arts, Veronica Greger, school psychologist, and the support staff of Lisa Menting, Kelly Spencer, Christopher Hagerty, Janine Igle, Megan Radley, Lindsay Koczek, and Amy Martinek. Second.
Okay, any discussion there? I think there was a question about that last one.
Yes. So I had sent, um, a clarification to Danny's question on email yesterday. So, and then Bobby brought copies of the support staff payment schedule to share with you.
Hi, do you want everybody to get those?
Do you want those right now to take a look at, or at the end of the meeting? So the question was where are they housed, and I had to check, because I did not know that answer. They are not in the employee handbook, because we would have to put every separate employee group in the handbook, and it would become very cumbersome. So what Melanie explained to me is that when a person is hired, that support schedule or payment schedule is, um, shared at that time. And then when you recently authorized a two point four two percent increase for all support staff, then those numbers were changed on the schedule accordingly, and Amy was the, um, being recently hired and not starting, she was just given that new wage as opposed to, you know, the old wage, and then when she starts saying, by the way, this is updated. So I'm not sure, does that answer your questions? Okay. And there are different classifications, um, related to responsibility and length of term, if you're a school year or, um, calendar year, et cetera. Those nuances are all in the, um, handout you'll get.
Okay, three minutes, I'll have that handout right now.
Okay.
Okay. A few minutes to look through that before we go ahead and approve this.
Approve the new hires.
Approve the new hires, yeah, so we'll get a motion on the floor.
So you said she was two? Yes, so the last employee listed on your doc, Amy Martinek, would be, um, the, where is she? Pupil Services Administrative Assistant. And if you recall, Heidi, at the June eleventh meeting, talked about, um, replacing Amber Resch, and you approved a full-time employee in Jeanie.
Bowman.
Thank you, Bowman, and then, um, brought to you the idea of a twenty-nine, I think she was twenty-nine hours per week. So part-time, because, um, we didn't have to budget additional money for them in not replacing Wendy Simons.
Okay. Unless there's any further questions or comments? I will do a roll call on this of new hires.
Jim Bowser?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deve?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
I wish we would have been able to do these separately. I'm gonna say no.
Danny Pyatt?
Uh, I too would like to get separate, so no.
Candy Mary?
Uh, yes. And I'll, I'll just say in the future that if, if you wanted it separate, um, you have to make a motion and ask that one be withheld, and that would be a separate motion.
Okay.
Correct, is that how you would?
That is totally correct, sir.
Oh, okay, we'll go on to resignations then.
I move the board accept the resignation of Sarah Mullins, first grade teacher in Spring Valley, Christy Broad, library, media specialist, AM Stein, a board alternate, education teacher at Karen Ashburner, English teacher at AHS effective June thirtieth, 2019. Second.
Okay. Any comments on these, or do we need to read them out?
I'd like to thank them for their service and the time that they spent here, and it's, I'm sorry to see all of them go. And I don't know if it's the right time, but the Bogaries just emailed me and are requesting an exit interview with the full board, so at some point you may want to decide. Do you, will do that?
Okay, anyone? We'll discuss that later.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of approving these resignations?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go on to donations.
I move the board accept the June twenty nineteen donation, Zelazowski with products, a hundred dollars to fill a backpack. Anonymous donor, ten thousand dollars to the Aquatic Center, Covantage, two hundred and fifty, fill a backpack. Johnson Coil, two hundred dollars, fill a backpack. Antigo Wrestling Club, seven hundred seventy-five dollars to the high school weight room. The Antigo Music Association, five hundred and fifty dollars to the band, high school band program. JW Madigan Sons, a thousand dollars to Nabokan, and Amron, a hundred to fill a backpack. For a total of twelve thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second. So Jeanie gets.
You're louder, but.
Andy, in addition to that, we also received an anonymous donation at the foundation, and, um, for the life of me, I can't remember the number, but I believe it was forty thousand dollars to help cover the cost of plastering at the aquatics under the summer.
Oh. Great. Now, that will be included in next month, right?
We, we don't typically, because the, it's made out to the foundation and not the school district.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I usually just make mention of it at that, that time.
This is plastering of what, Kim, what's getting plastered?
So, um, last year, the, the, um, board approved a hundred thousand dollars for the cost of plastering the activity pool, the lap pool, I'm sorry, competition pool, and this year, um, the activity pool is scheduled, and that's gonna be at a cost of seventy-nine thousand.
Are you talking the walls, Tim, or inside the pool?
The pool vessel, the pool vessel.
Yeah.
And that'll be scheduled, I believe, the first or second of the kids' September.
Okay. Okay, so we'll react to, uh, we didn't actually approve any stuff to be. So, all those in favor of approving the donations?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, and then we'll go on to confirming the next meeting. Would be July twenty-third. Is that good with everybody? Okay. And then we will be going to a closed session, so it'd be looking in consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute one nine point eight five, one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or evaluation debt of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to discuss administrative contracts in a recent act of review.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Paying a roll call.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long? Jessica Mead?
No.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deve?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
No.
Jim Bowser?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Okay.